Next, we have hearing of public concerns. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. I'm Mike Schaefer. I'm here on behalf of the Project 2020 Project Selection Committee. We've gotten quite a bit of publicity over the last several weeks, and I wanted to update council on where we stood on this thing. And to alert you on the future likelihood that we may be asking you to partner with some project that has come before us. Those of you who haven't heard about Project 2020, it was an idea that was really the origin of Phil Lennon, who about 10 years ago said, you know, if we get a group of people together, pool their money, and target a project down the road 10 or 15 years, we can probably generate a whole bunch of money that we couldn't otherwise do in a short term by ourselves. So about two dozen people got together and said, that sounds like a good idea. And over the last 10 years, we've been making small but consistent contributions to one large fund, targeting year 2020 as the project year that we would kick off some major initiative in the Bryan area to try to improve the quality of life of the citizens of the community. This past year, it was the beginning phases to get the word out. And that campaign was kicked off in October. And we have been in that phase now for a couple, actually about four months. And that will conclude at the end of February. During this period, we've been asking citizens and other members of the community, agencies, government entities to submit ideas to us as to quality projects that they think would be worthy of consideration. And to date, I think we've received somewhere between five and 10 projects. Jack Brace at the Bryan Area Foundation has been the warehouse for collecting those ideas. We intentionally have not looked through those and studied them yet. We want to make sure everybody gets in, and then we have an opening and look at everything initially. One of the criteria in choosing the project is because this fund is an arm of the Bryan Area Foundation, and those contributions that have been made have been receiving tax deductible treatment from the donors. Any ultimate beneficiary has to be a tax exempt organization that qualifies under the Bryan Area Foundation's criteria for tax exempt organizations. So obviously, when we go to look at these projects, we're going to be examining whether there is a nonprofit, a government entity, or some other agency that fits within those parameters that can be the sponsoring organization to carry the project through, and then ultimately would be the entity responsible for upkeep maintenance. It isn't our design that we will become the operator of a project long term. We're the initial funder. We're trying to inspire people to come up with ideas. But then, once we get that on the board and assist in the development and funding of the project, somebody else will have to be the partner who maintains it, carries it forward. So we anticipate the city to be a partner in this potentially. And so I think we've had meetings with the park, and I know, John, you were at the Parks Board when I presented there. I think they have some ideas. So the purpose of this visit today is just to give you a heads up that we will be in the narrowing the field stage here in the next several months. From the end of February until the end of May, we'll be looking at the projects that have been submitted. We'll be trying to identify the three most worthy candidates, and then start refining and asking for further information on those projects. It's during that phase that we may be asking the city to look at something. If we choose this, is this something you'd be interested in funding long term? Does it fit within the plans of the city and so forth? So I'm just asking you folks to be open to our suggestions and ideas. Perhaps meet with us in the future after we open the envelopes and see the projects. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, contact me. Jack Brace has some information. We've got some flyers and folders and applications. So hopefully, we get several worthy projects on the board, and one of them involves the city. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, would you mind leaving those pamphlets here, and I can pass them on after the meeting?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other hearing of public concerns? If not, council is going to take a short recess and go into executive session. For appointment of personnel.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
If you weren't patient, thank you anyway for that. Okay. We have gone over our committees, and I'm going to let the mayor read them off for us.
Okay, for the committees for 2008 for council, we have, and we will need a motion for this. Richard Hoopie and Lynn Wieland for budget. Finance and audit, Judy Yarris and Mary Leatherman. Wage, Richard Hoopie and Judy Yarris. Tax incentive review, Judy Yarris, John Betts, and Mayor Schlain. Economic development, Richard Hoopie and Mary Leatherman. Negotiations team, John Betts and Lynn Wieland. Revolving loan fund, John Betts. Bi-PAC, Mary Leatherman.
Okay. Council?
Make a motion we accept.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, number six is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Ordinance number four, 2018. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $635 for the general fund Parks and Recreation Department for operating supplies. They received a reimbursement for tree damage that they would like to have re-appropriated. The second item is $12,000 for the fire department for fire escrow cleanup. I believe there was a fire at 427 Cherry Street, and we're asking for appropriation for that escrow. And $1,382.85 for the 220 probation grant, which is for 2018. This is money that was left over in their 2017 funds that we need to go ahead and appropriate. It's a bi-annual grant, but the money's already been received from the state, so I'm just asking for the appropriation so they can spend it for professional services. Total amount of appropriations requested, $14,017.85.
Move to suspend?
Second.
I'll second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Ordinance, number seven is another ordinance. Lori, would you please read and number?
Ordinance number five, 2018. An ordinance to authorize the hiring of outside counsel for potential litigation when the municipal prosecutor has a conflict of interest.
Mayor? Yes, City Attorney Rob Fisher represents us both as a city attorney and also by statute our municipal prosecutor for the county. There is a case that is a conflict for her, and she cannot represent or be the municipal prosecutor for that. So she's asking that we appoint Troy Essex. He is a newly hired municipal prosecutor out of defiance. Just so you know, his rate of pay is $100 an hour. That is government pay. You cannot find attorneys like that in normal circumstances. So it is a very cost-effective amount, and she does need to be removed from that case.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a resolution. Lori?
Resolution number eight, 2018. A resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application as submitted by Cora Brewhouse Wine and Wine Bar LLC.
Mr. Bailey?
Good evening. Just a little backstory on this. CRA is Community Reinvestment. You can get a tax abatement on real improvements that you do on renovation costs, let's say, or you put capital improvements inside a building. This particular project, they're estimating renovation costs to be about $320,000, so that will tag them for a seven-year abatement. We don't finalize the actual abatement until it's done. We confirm that they did get that much money wrapped up into it. If something happens that they actually have less than $250,000, then we'll take it back to a five-year abatement. But basically, you're approving their application for the CRA, and then once construction's final, we will verify and certify that and submit it to the auditor for further processing. So with that, I would ask you to suspend the rules and approve if you don't have any further questions.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So the, on the second part of the, where it has the application?
Yes.
You all, there's a group, a zoning inspector group, et cetera, who reviews that and fills that out to make sure things are appropriate.
Andrew and I take care of that in-house.
Yeah, okay. So then, once that's done, then it's the next step that goes on.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm good.
And this won't actually be filed for potentially a year. It just depends on how long the construction takes, if it's three months, six months. But this is the first step. They have to apply for this before they do any construction on the projects. That way, we get every dollar tagged in here, so we have a way to chase the paper around, so.
I support movement downtown.
Absolutely.
So it has nothing to do with that. It was more of a process thing, I mean, than anything else.
Absolutely.
So I would move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt? I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an employee status change. Mr. Ingstrom?
Good evening. On February 7th, Cassandra Mackays will have completed her one-year probation at the recycling department. She's done a great job this first year, and I ask that you place her on regular employment status.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have another employee status change. Chief Willis?
Counsel, effective February 7th, 2018, Jesse Barrera will have successfully completed his one-year probation with the police department. At this time, I would like to ask counsel to accept my recommendation that Mr. Barrera be appointed to regular full-time status. Again, this will be effective February 7th.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another employee status change. Mr. Weigant?
I have a couple for you. First is Jason Mannan. As of February 7th, he will have had six months at our department. He's done a good job for us. He's actually passed the certification exam for the state at this point. He just has the time that he needs to put in to be a Class 1 operator. Asking your permission to move him on off of probationary status.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Second item is a new hire. Unlicensed new hire. Gentleman's name is Brett Driscoll, and we'd like to hire him to fill the vacant position that Joel DeLong left when he transferred to the fire department.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, excuse me, we have the 2017 report from the engineering department.
Are you all set where you need us?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going too deep, but going just a little bit deeper this year than what we normally do because we do have a few new members. It's our 2017 annual report. I am your city engineer, and those two pictures there, just kind of an aerial photograph of the Main and South intersection that we're going to talk about in a few minutes. And also, I'm also the chairman of the Williams County Land Bank, and as part of that, the lower right corner there is the former AP station that we were able to receive some grant funds, and the land bank took it over and we're in the process of cleaning that up, and hopefully going to abate that property and make it look a little better for us. My office, got myself, Melanie Kaiser, the administrative assistant, Andrew Waterston, zoning administrator, Don Klein takes care of GIS mapping and some design. Takes care of surveying and inspection, and Scott Noble does inspection, and he's the traffic assistant. One of the projects we did last year, Mayberry Drive Improvements, awarded March of 17. M&amp;M Asphalt was the contractor. Cost was approximately $254,000, and it was in the Rec Park area, and that is, if any of you paid attention, was a full-depth pavement removal, and additional storm sewer and other drainage improvements. We basically took a chip-seal road that had very little stone base and completely redid it, and I'm pleased with the way it turned out. I've got goals here in the next few years to try and extend that the rest of the way out. On that project, they had good days and bad days. You see a dump truck there, and it's got an excavator hooked to the front. You can see on the side what happened. Usually, I put my rainy days pictures up here because it's always a wet spring when we try and do construction, but this is another one. He was stuck, and it wasn't pretty, so just a little food for thought. Another project, the 300 block of North Meyer Street, we replaced a sanitary sewer. This was, I want to say, an emergency repair per se. It's an older part of town. It was clay sewer, and it was a maintenance problem. And unfortunately, it was over the $50,000 bid threshold, so we actually had to advertise for bids and award the project. But that project got completed, and we've had no issues there since then. Center and Town Line improvements, you're all aware of that, was awarded June of 17 to Gurken Paving, around $120,000. We added a new center turn lane, upgraded the signals, and we added solar-powered school zone lights, which was a joint BMU and engineering effort. We had split the costs on those between the electric department and ourselves and trying to show some energy conservation there as well. So real pleased with how those are working out. We had some issues initially with them. There were some voltage problems from the manufacturer, but now they all seem to be working out fine, and everybody can see the lights, so we're very pleased. East South Street improvements, awarded July of 17. All-purpose contracting was the contractor. $254,000 cost. We had widened the road out and put a wider turn lane. And again, we're going to talk about that here in just a few more minutes, but those two pictures there show the subbase before they were getting ready to put the asphalt down in the lower left, and the upper right is when they were pouring driveway approaches behind the curb. So when our inspectors are out, they take a lot of pictures and document a lot of things, and it can come in handy in a few years if we see a break or a crack. We can always go back through the pictures and see, maybe help us figure out what went wrong or if there was something buried. So we do a pretty detailed job of that. The asphalt program last year was fairly big, $342,000. Gurken paving again got the job. We'd repave parts of Lebanon Avenue A, Center Ridge, Downing, Mayer, Short, and Lewis Anna. And again, it was one of our bigger ones that we've had in quite a few years. Payment marking program, that's typical every year, $84,000. Zimmerman Paint, they've been the successful bidder as long as I've been here at the city, so we're pleased to have them do the work. Interesting picture, it's the same one I used last year, but I thought we've got a few new council members. So if you think it's just paint they're blowing on the ground, it's not. It's a multi-part process. The paint's actually sort of like a two-part epoxy. Paint comes down in the front, and then you've got another element that goes in the middle that kind of helps react and make it stick a little bit longer. We used to have good enamel paint that lasted, and now it's water-based and it wears off. But with this process here, it kind of helps make it last a little bit longer. And then at the end, they spray some glass beads on top of it, which that's actually what you're seeing in the reflection on the road. So we, you know, glass beads, and we typically do this towards the end of the year. Most people say, why don't you do it early in the year so we can see the reflection? Well, we'd rather see the reflection in the winter when there's a little bit of snow and ice on it, so you can hopefully see through. So typically, we like to do that in the fall rather than in the spring.
Brian, do you have any sense about how long, I'm just curious personally, how long it takes to dry? Is it like within 10 seconds? Is it like 3 minutes?
Within, it depends. If it's long line, like center line striping or something, typically that'll dry within a minute. If it's a bigger area with like the turn arrows or the crosswalks, that might take 10 to 15 minutes until it's tacky enough. In fact, they do most of their striping midnight, midnight to 5:00 AM, where they can physically close off portions of the road. And it's kind of interesting for the people that are out and about at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning because they're dodging traffic cones all over, but it seems like it's the best time for them to work. So from 3 to 15 minutes, depending on. Another project we have not started yet, it was bid in October. It's the 2017 Southwest Sanitary Sewer Improvements, $435,000 cost. That was 50/50 through Ohio Public Works grants. We're usually successful every couple of years in getting those. Again, this is in the southwest part of town, and we're replacing sewers in the rear yards. We've sent notifications out to all the affected property owners and let them know what's coming up. We've had a few questions back and forth with them, but the contractors like to do this in the winter when it's frozen. It's much easier getting people's backyards, and it still makes a mess, but it's a little bit less of a mess when the ground's frozen. So we prefer to do that in February, so we're hoping we can get a little frost in the ground here and get rolling on that. ODOT Main Street paving, we actually didn't construct that last year, but I'm actually pretty proud that we finally received a grant for that. $120,000, or excuse me, $1.2 million estimate. We were supposed to receive 90% funding, but we're going to receive 95% funding on that up to a threshold. They had a little extra money left. And that's just three pictures there that we use during the grant application process to kind of show the quality of what everything is. You can see around manholes where the structure's in the upper right where there's some asphalt missing, and it's just a constant pothole struggle for the street department to take care of. Lower left where they've done some dura-patching and whatnot, to patch areas that have cracked. And then the lower right, the center line of the road's breaking up pretty good, and without a fair amount of maintenance on it, the water's just going to get down in and crack and just make a heck of a mess. So we're pleased with that. We're in the final design stages on that. The final drawings need to go to ODOT in May, and we anticipate bidding the project in July, and that's when the grants are available with their physical year. So we should be able to construct September, October. So we're really looking forward to that project as well. We had a new subdivision last year, Woodstream extended. We actually, the city, did not put this in. A private developer put it in. But again, we approved the drawings, we inspected the project, made sure it conformed to city standards and so forth. And we've got a couple pictures there of the curbing and the day they were getting ready to put the asphalt down. And of course, this is out by the school property, just West Amarky Drive. The upper right corner there shows a lot, so very pleased to have some development back in town. And when Andrew, when he gets in, I don't know if he's doing his annual report the next meeting or the one after, but he'll go over the zoning and the building permits, and he'll let you know where we stand on that dollar-wise and so forth there. He had a pretty decent year compared to other years. Other tasks, we're responsible for traffic control devices. We assist the utility office with bidding and designing projects if they need it. Also wastewater and parks, we help them with their capital projects, assist the street department as needed. The zoning and building department is in-house, and Scott and I both have plows on our trucks, and we help out Tyson as needed and take care of a few lots, whatever's necessary. Goals, as always, I want to try and apply for some more grants. Obviously, we're going to get the North and South Main Street paving project done as long as everything goes according to schedule. I want to apply for more Ohio Public Works water and sewer and street projects. I know last year we had looked at redoing all of East South Street, looking to apply for some grants. Unfortunately, most grants are only good in low-to-moderate income areas, and that's not really a low-to-moderate income. But Ohio Public Works could be a good candidate because we received Ohio Public Works funds when we did Fountain Grove Drive. So we're hoping we can be successful on that, and if not, we'll keep trying until we get it because it won't be in our budget to be able to redo that street in its entirety when my capital budget is 1 to 1.2 million. That street will be way over that. So we have to have some grant funds, so we'll do what we can there. And again, we're going to continue with commercial and industrial clean water investigations. Lori mentioned the SSO project, which stands for sanitary sewer overflow. We had had issues in the past in the city with sanitary sewer overflows and weren't quite under mandates, but we were under suggestions by Ohio EPA to stop these. So we did that and built this large wastewater lagoon that collected additional storm water. We've been removing downspouts, been removing sump pumps, but we're most of the way through the residential properties, but it's time to check on some commercial properties. And we've hit a few of them over the years where we found some big industry head, large roof drains going into the sanitary sewer, and we helped do some storm sewer extensions and do what we could to help them out to try and get that less water in our sanitary sewer system. But we're going to continue working on that. Side notes, this is Main and South. You can see the cars, there's a white bar down there, and that onto the side street there, that they can actually make that turn, and the cars stop back far enough. So, you know, what people need to understand is if they don't stop behind that white bar where they see that sign that says "Stop here to actuate signal," the signal...
Just one, Brian, on the last slide there on East South Street?
Yep.
Where that is now, and as you're going, if traffic is going in or out of that gas station, is there any concerns there from a...
We didn't have any. I had actually closed off part of their exit. They actually, I think we took probably 40 foot of their exit and closed it, so there was no cars that could actually leave. I'll see if I can back up one more. I don't know if this laser pointer will work, but no, it's not going to work. But from the stop bar towards Main Street on the right, yep, right there where the mouse pointer's at, that used to be concrete driveway, and they used to be able to leave through there. But when I drive through Montpelier, the Handy Dandy or the BP, whatever that station is downtown, you stop way back from the stoplight, and part of the reason is traffic leaving the gas station and semis trying to make the turn. So, you know, you can see, it's obvious, the first day the job was done, a semi jumped over the curb and tore up the grass there and so forth. So we've got some ideas there that we can do to kind of help protect that a little more. But the biggest thing is, like I told counsel last year after this job was done, it's more or less just training the public to know to stop back, and training the truck drivers to know that the cars are back for a reason, and they can make a wide turn and make it all happen. So, you know, we've got some signage that we're going to put up there in the spring, and maybe if that doesn't fix it, we'll put some concrete in between the sidewalk and the curbing there, so when the trucks drive up over it, they're just going to drive on concrete and not necessarily ruin the grass. Maybe put some rumble strips so they know they drove over the edge there, but we've got some ideas, so. But no, as far as design concerns, no, I don't have any issues. The cars are all pulled back. In fact, our city, the planning and zoning code has a ruling in there. I think it's 100 feet away from an intersection. You can't even leave a property with a commercial property. So this was actually designed before we had those zoning regulations, so that's why you're leaving right there at the corner. It's bad design practice. So by pulling it back, it helps get them closer into conformance with what the new code is and hopefully helps everything else, so. But as of now, we're pleased. If you have any questions, feel free to stop in and see me, call me, email me. I can't say send a smoke signal. That's the fire chief's job, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our agenda, we'll go around the room. Chief Willis? Mr. Wieland? Mr. Ingstrom? Chief Siders? Mr. Weigant? BPA? Okay, counsel, Lynn?
Nothing.
John?
Yes, a couple of things. One, I'm continuing to be impressed by our city workers, especially street garbage in difficult times and snow again tonight, and one and two inches here and there. And I saw another truck went by my house today that was a smaller truck version, apparently, with some assistance from other... That kind of cooperation and that kind of work ethic, I'm continuing to be impressed with, and I'm glad I'm a Bryan resident. The other thing is I'd like to thank Phil, and then for his vision for 2020. I'd like to thank the 2020 Committee and also the Bryan Area Foundation, and just like to say that personally, I'm more than willing to meet and discuss various options that will help improve with this leverage money that they so wisely... that will help improve with this leverage money that they so wisely and thoughtfully put in place. That's it.
Mary?
Have a good night.
Rick?
Nothing.
Lori? Mayor?
One thing, I was invited last week to attend Four County as an elected official. Mr. Hoopie was there as an instructor and an elected official, and it was a really well-done event. As a Bryan elected official, I got to see three students that were at Four County from Bryan. Surprisingly or not, I had gone to all of their doors when I was campaigning for mayor, and each either remembered me or remembered their parent saying something about me coming to their house. So it was fun to talk to them a little about my campaign, but also to really learn from them what they see in their community, what their vision is for their life, and the skilled trade they learn right now as a junior or senior in high school. Four County in 1997 was certainly not what it is today, and so Mr. Hoopie and everyone, Mr. Meister and everyone included in that vision and also follow-through, you should congratulate yourself, you've done an amazing job for our five-county area, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you all for coming, have a good evening, and if it's snowing out there, be careful.